Thank you, everyone, as the numbers are coming up from the participants. I'll let these come on. I understand there's 80 plus people that are registered today. So the numbers are coming in. I'll introduce myself, Merrick D'Olivo, the school board vice president. I'll be conducting the physical meeting today. Mr. Nichol is joining us by Zoom. So as it comes up, it looks like the numbers have leveled. So at this point, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District, School Board Action Meeting of October 12, 2020. And at this time, I'd ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and I'm going to ask Ms. Andracy. Apparently, I'm not close enough to the mic with the mask. So I'm going to ask Ms. Andracy to introduce to us the I Led the Pledge, the Ms. Andracy.
If that feedback starts again, I'll turn that off. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to share with you that our I Led the Pledge student this evening is Shawn Boston Jr. He is a third grade student at Hain Elementary School. Shawn Jr. is the son of Shawn Boston and Shawna Hendry of Cranberry Township. He was chosen for this honor by Hain Elementary Principal, Ms. Kristen White, who is joining us this evening via Zoom and supporter Shawn. Shawn tells us his favorite subject is math and that he wants to be a police officer when he grows up. Shawn's I Led the Pledge tonight was pre-recorded as he was unable to join us in person. In addition to playing the video this evening, please know we will also be posting this on our website as well as social media tomorrow, so please be sure to view it there. We will also be sure to get in his swag bag of Seneca Valley items as well as his I Led the Pledge t-shirt and medal. So at this time, I would invite the board, the administration, and of course, the public here and at home to stand if you are able and join us for the pledge allegiance. Ms. Palano, you can play the recording when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which this is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Thank you, and I should have said Dr. Palano. Thank you again to Shawn Boston Jr. for participating in that. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Andracy. At this time, I'm going to ask that we take a roll call. Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bradle?
Here.
Mr. D'Olivo?
Here.
Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Hester?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Nichol?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Widerson?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our first order of business this evening, which will be information reports. Ms. Andracy.
Thank you again, Mr. Vice President. We just have a few dates to remember to share with you this evening. October is National Principals Month. This is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. October 17th, the senior high school will be hosting a PSA, PSAT testing date. And then the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice Cyber Program will end their first nine weeks for grades seven through 12 on October 23rd, with the rest of our students in grades seven through 12 ending their first nine weeks on October 28th. October 31st is Halloween. And then the next day, November 1st, is daylight savings time is ending. So that means we will all fall back one hour. And then on November 3rd is Election Day. That's all I have, Mr. Vice President, unless you have some questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Andracy? Oh, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Interesting to note that October is National Principals Month. Last week, I think we acknowledged that it was National Teachers' Day on Monday. And I just think the principals, I don't know that we always understand exactly what the principals do, except that I think they do everything. And when no one else has the answer, they do. They're always the pivot point between sort of the administrative policy side and the operation side. And I certainly hope that I represent the board's sentiment that we are ever so grateful that we have such a wonderful group of principals and vice principals. And I'd just like to extend my thanks to them for working hard this particularly troubling year.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you very much. Is there any other board member with a comment or question? Looking around again. Thank you, Ms. Andracy.
Thank you.
So we'll get back into the agenda. In your backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, tax collection, and capital projects funds. If there's any questions, I'm sure you've already addressed those with Ms. Burtner. Moving on, we will move into the federal program allocation spending plan, and that's Dr. Palano.
Thank you. I will do my best to give you a brief, yet detailed overview of the federal funding and allocations that we have within our district this school year. So every year, like most districts across the state, Seneca Valley receives federal funds to be allocated to Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV programming. The annual allocations do not fully fund the Title I and the other title programs that I will speak to this evening. Therefore, local funds are used to cover the unfunded costs in order to maintain the integrity of the title programs. So Title I programs are designed to help students meet challenging state academic standards. This year, Evan City Elementary and Hain Elementary are designated Title I buildings. The current remediation framework includes small group instruction, utilizing research-based interventions in reading for all students that may be at risk for not meeting end-of-year learning targets. These groups are facilitated by reading specialists, special education teachers, the instruction and intervention specialists, as well as classroom teachers. The goal of each of these interventions, as it aligns with the program goals, is to accelerate learning so that children are at the average of their classmates by the time they successfully complete the intervention. Evan City Middle School is also a designated Title I school this school year. In that building, there is a math interventionist that focuses on grade-level standards and effective instructional strategies for closing the achievement gap in math. The math interventionist will co-teach with the classroom teachers as well as pull students for small group instruction. Title II is a separate program. Title II is focused on professional development and quality of instruction as well as class size reduction. At Seneca Valley, Title II funds are used to target class size reduction at the elementary level. Title III is designed to help our English learners develop English language proficiency. Eligible students receive specialized instruction in a pull-out setting within the school day, and the program is based specifically on individual student needs. Title IV is an additional program with the intent to improve student achievement as well. As such, we apply Title IV funding to assist with the unfunded costs within our Title I program. This year specifically, due to COVID-19, the school district received additional funding through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, otherwise known as ESER Fund. These are one-time funds to help school districts respond to COVID-19 impacts. Seneca Valley ESER funds have been allocated by prioritizing investments for our vulnerable student population as well as mitigating the spread of COVID-19. These ESER funds will address early literacy programming as well as the acquisition of additional resources to address achievement and opportunity gaps that students have presented with as a result of the pandemic. So ESER funds are also used to offset the costs of additional janitorial services and equipment for the daily disinfecting of all of our buildings. Additionally, we received one-time funds through the Special Education COVID-19 Impact Mitigation Grant. These are one-time funds to offset the cost associated with the development and implementation of enhanced instruction to address student need, skill deficits, or lack of progress that resulted from difficulties related to delivering a free and appropriate education during the COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, the district is planning to provide summer remediation programs that will be developed and offered to qualifying students. Learning materials and tools will also be purchased to enhance the delivery of instruction and address deficit skills. And finally, professional development will be planned to enhance the delivery of remediation programming offered both in-person and in remote environments. And just as a reminder, in July, we brought to you information about the PCCD grant, which also did contain one-time funds. Those funds were used to purchase plexiglass gloves, masks, thermal scanners, directional floor stickers, hand sanitizers, dispensers, additional HVAC filters and disinfectants. So of course, this is just to help the school district offset the funds, while none of these programs are fully funding any one initiative at this particular time.
Thank you, Dr. Palano. Are there any questions for Dr. Palano? Let's see. Oh, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Dr. Palano, a little bit off the subject, but I found your summaries of the different titles to be very helpful. I've been doing this for six years now, and I still learned a couple of things. So in your free time, I'd like to ask you to consider writing up one or two paragraph summaries of each of the various titles and making them available to the school board members, particularly any new school board members, so that as you toss around Title I and Title IX, we can sort of have a cheat sheet that we can check to make sure we understand the conversation. It was a great job. I thought it was very helpful, and I'd ask you to expand it a little bit and provide that information for the board members. Thank you.
Sure thing. I'd be happy to do so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Look to the back, then look on the screen. I don't see any. I will make the one comment. I know that the Title I funding that we've had, I know Hain and Evan City have been designated as Title I centers or schools, but we also offer that through all of our schools. And as Dr. Palano said earlier, that cost is not covered by the grant, but we made a decision years ago as a district to continue to offer those same programs in all of our elementary schools. So just something for the participants that are here, just to know that. Thank you, Dr. Palano. Seeing no other questions or comments, we will move on to the next item, which is our COVID-19 update from Dr. Vitell.
Thank you, Mr. D'Olivo. I've been asked by a board member to give at least once a month a COVID-19 update to the public, which I am more than willing to do so that the public is also aware. The school board is updated constantly by me via email even between meetings. Now, they're not permitted to deliberate on those emails because that would be violating the Sunshine Act tonight and last Monday. There are two meetings a month, or if they call an additional meeting, is their opportunity to deliberate with one another as a whole of the school board, a whole body of the school board. And so let me begin by also reminding the public that I've spoken about in several meetings already, but I want to remind folks in case they're new this evening that back in July, when school districts were looking to the Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, looking for guidelines from the CDC and looking for guidelines from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, there were very few guidelines about schools because at that point, we were still focused as a country on businesses, getting people back to work. We were focused on public spaces, restaurants, getting our businesses up and operating, which was a very good thing to do. But in July, I need to be ready as a school superintendent to open schools in August, as we do every year. And so at that point, one of our teachers introduced me to an epidemiologist from the University of Minnesota by the name of Dr. Michael Olsterholm. And I began reading his research. He is an epidemiologist with 45 years of experience, and he worked closely with the Department of Health in Minnesota to give schools early indicators of following community transmission and how we might return to our schools in America. He is internationally known. His work does not just take place in Minnesota. He also is the director of CIDRAP out of the University of Minnesota. And so I began following his work along with other infectious disease experts and other epidemiologists. His work in late June, early July indicated that we should be watching as school directors, as school superintendents, as school leaders, we should be watching the community transmission numbers. And he does believe in local control and not broad views, although looking at state views, looking at national views, and international views are all very important. And I did study a lot of international schools in the summer as well as schools in Europe began opening up or schools in other parts of the world began opening up, how we might take some of the things that they learned as well. But all summer, our administrative team studied with our Return to School Task Force how we might be able to return to school safely. So the goal was always to get kids physically back in school and for those students who they and their families might choose not to return to school, how we could still offer them a quality education and options. So I want to give you that context and that background because early on, when school superintendents in this county and this state were looking to the Department of Education for rubrics, and we were looking for ways to qualify the numbers, you know, what's safe? Is one safe? Is 100 safe in our community? We didn't know. We didn't have a lot of guidance from the state. And so again, looking at Dr. Olsterholm's work with CIDRAP with the University of Minnesota, he was looking at in July that if the community transmission could stay below nine new cases a day, it would probably be pretty safe to return to school. And we followed that as a school district, and we were watching the numbers, knowing we are not public health officials. We also, in the county, all of the school district superintendents as well as emergency responders were on a call with our Butler County Commissioners every Monday at 2:00, starting in March. And that's something that other counties did not do and have since tried to do. Some met with success, others did not. But in this county, we've been very successful with the communication process between our county commissioners, between those in the county leaders in the emergency management, and the Butler Health System where we have an infectious disease expert. And at UPMC in Cranberry, where we have an emergency room doctor who has many years of experience and is a great resource for all of the Butler County superintendents. So again, in case you're new to listening to our meetings, these are all people I still continue to consult with on a weekly basis. So the numbers I began watching in the summer and tracking, all of us have access to, but they can be overwhelming. So if you go to the Pennsylvania Department of Health website and you go to the Pennsylvania Department of Education website, there are many, many, many resources that can make it difficult for our parents and our general public to kind of sift through to determine what should I be looking at. I want our public and our parents to know that two sources that I'm constantly reminding our school board about is the Pennsylvania Department of Health COVID-19 Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard. Now, that dashboard, if I remember correctly, came out in August. I don't have the exact date, but again, I needed to be prepared to open school this summer, ready for August. And so I was disappointed. I continue to be disappointed at times with the slowness of our Department of Health in getting us the metrics we were looking for as school superintendents, but they did. And so now we are watching that. That's the Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard. So in that dashboard from the Department of Health, you can sort by county. You can look at the state numbers. They are important to look at. You can also look at the data by county. So what we've been doing, and Lisa Mislin, who sits here as the secretary for the school board as well as my assistant in my office, she tracks these every day for us in a separate spreadsheet so that we too can watch the data from a district perspective. And she has been tracking the number of new daily cases since August 18th, which was about two or three days before our teachers returned because I wanted to see this over time. First, we layered in as a school district, our 12-month employees returning in July. They were working from home and doing quite well, but you know, we were layering in more people on campus and in our buildings to pay attention to the cases and see if our mitigations were working. So then we layered in the teachers. And again, since that time, we've been tracking cases. So the first week that we tracked on the Department of Health website, new daily cases was August 18th. And we track those on a 14-day rolling average, which again, is what Dr. Olsterholm takes a look at. And in the 14-day rolling average, then when we get the new daily average, we take away the earliest date on that. So the weeks, 14 days from August 18th through August 31st, to give you perspective, we were at a 4.6 14-day rolling average in the county. Our most recent 14-day rolling average. So before our teachers returned, we were at 4.6 in the county. And we are only one school district, as you know, in the county. And this tracking goes on and on, and I constantly share it with the board, share it with teachers, anyone who would like to see all of these numbers. They are overwhelming. If we look at the most recent count that I have before me, we are on the 14-day rolling count from September 28th to October 11th. 14-day rolling average is 15.6. So that gives you a perspective, on average, new daily cases in the entire county. That is just something we keep locally to pay attention to. And that was something, again, we began looking at very early in the summer per Dr. Olsterholm. There are many data points for which we are viewing the daily cases. That's just one of them. Let me go to the next. As a member of the Butler Health System Hospital Board, I receive daily updates from the CEO. Those are not secrets. He shares those with all of the employees, and I know he shares those with the public as I've seen those numbers in the newspaper. So as of today, there is one patient in Butler Hospital with COVID and none in the ICU. That's another viewpoint for which we constantly are watching every day. I wanted to give you today's numbers. The next data point that we take a look at is then Lisa goes in, and this is very labor-intensive. And she tracks on the Pennsylvania Department of Health website our school district numbers by ZIP codes. So we go into the ZIP codes, and again, we've been doing this for a while. And on the ZIP code page, we began again tracking because the next layer now, after 12-month employees and teachers returned, approximately 600 teachers, now we have about 900 employees across all of our campuses. Now we start up with the bus drivers and the students and the cohort model. So we begin tracking by ZIP code on August 28th. And the first date that we tracked, again, it's all there. You just have to go back in the data if you want to see earlier than August 28th. We were looking at a total of 294 positive COVID cases confirmed from the following ZIP codes: Calery, Cranberry Township, Evan City, Harmony, Mars. Yes, we have students who have Mars addresses. I think they live in Seven Fields, but they are our students. That's why that ZIP code is included. But we recognize not all of those numbers in the Mars ZIP code would be necessarily attributed to Seneca Valley. That would be anyone who has a Mars post office box or Mars address, 16046 ZIP code. Renfrew, Zillion Opal. So for a total on August 28th of 294 cases since the pandemic began in March, there is no daily count, the way the Department of Health divides out the daily cases. But Lisa goes in periodically to give us a snapshot. And so when we began tracking this, we could see in our district, for instance, on August 30th, between the 28th and the 30th, we had six new cases. And then you can compare that to the daily cases in the county. And obviously, our cases would be much lower than the entire county. Then we go to, we track that, as I said, we go in about every one to three days and divide out that data. So to give you an example, today with those ZIP codes, as of October 12th, we are at three new cases. And you can mine this data on your own. It's not something that is secret. It's on the Department of Health website. That is a data point that, again, the board is always looking at. I am always looking at. Let's go to the next data point. The next one is called, oh, before we do that, let's go back to the Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard because this is something that's been brought up by board members and by public members. So the Department of Health in the state of Pennsylvania, they don't track by 14-day rolling averages. That's a snapshot we look at as a district based on Dr. Olsterholm's research. They track the most recent seven-day period as compared to the previous seven-day period. And so when you go to the Pennsylvania Department of Health website and you type in COVID-19 Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard, all of these links are also on our website, and they are under COVID-19. We see, when I look at this data, so I pulled some of this from September 25th through October 1st, was a seven-day period. And that was the most recent one. I pulled that last week. And then, I'm sorry, it was two weeks ago because I pulled it for last Monday's school board meeting. And then compare that to the previous seven-day period on September 18th to the 24th. So those two seven-day periods, at that point, the difference in confirmed cases, which is the most recent seven-day versus the previous seven-day, was 21. So in the county, in Butler County, we had 21 new cases from the period of September 18th through the 24th as compared to September 25th through October 1st. That same data today, when we pull it, it's 28 cases. So you see, this is an additional view, 21 to 28 cases across seven days. Then we go to incident rate. And in one of the views, we see 33 for incident rate per 100,000 residents. And today, 49, or most recent data, 49.5. Now, when I say most recent data on the Department of Health, that's September 25th through October 1st, when they do their snapshot. PCR percent positivity rate. You've heard that talked about in public here. We were at last Monday's meeting, 3.1% in the county. We are now at 3.8%. Then it goes on to talk about in this, in the graph, you know, how many ventilators in the county that would be attributed to Butler Health System, how many people are in the hospital, I shared, you know, with COVID. I shared today's number. In that dashboard, we are seeing a slight uptick in Butler County. So I did want to point that out. And an increase from a rate of 34.6 previous seven days positivity of cases in the incident rate to 49.5 in the most recent seven days per 100,000 residents in the county. There are approximately 200,000 residents in Butler County. So again, that's another view. I also want you to keep in mind that the Walmart Cranberry testing site has closed due to a lack of demand. And so that can impact, not necessarily, well, it can impact your positivity rate, but most certainly your testing rate unless individuals choose to go elsewhere, which they most certainly can and do. The next item I want to point out, I know this is a lot of data, but I want the public to see what we're looking at on a constant rolling basis, seven days compared to the last seven days, 14-day rolling average, county numbers, ZIP code numbers. Then we go to the recommendations for pre-K to 12 schools following the identification of a case. You heard me talk about this last week, you know, what will it take to close a building? People ask me, or what won't it take to close a building? You know, they've asked me both. And this is a public document. Again, this came out later than superintendents had hoped for. This was more of an August data point, metrics, but we were glad to get them. Butler County is considered by the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education as a county that has moderate transmission. We knew that. We knew that when we moved from cohort to five day a week. Certainly, the board knew that as well and considered that and weighed that in their decision. Under the moderate level of community transmission in the county. If we have one student or one staff member, the school does not need to close and we are to clean the areas where the student was, whether that's buses, classrooms, cafeteria. If we have two to four students or staff in the same school building or less than 5% of the total number of students or staff in a school building or multiple school buildings with individual cases who are not household contacts. Then it is recommended, not required, but recommended that we close schools for five to seven days. We clean those areas where the student or staff member spent time. If we have the next category. If we have five or more students and staff, so that could be two teachers, one administrator, one teacher and three students, you know, they, they put them together. This is not five students and five staff. It's five or more students and/or staff in the same school building or greater than equal to 5% of the total number of students or multiple school buildings with two to four cases who are not household contacts. Then they are recommending, recommending, not requiring that we close schools for 14 days and clean. So I, again, I repeat this because we do not to date, as I sit here tonight. Since we have opened school, we have had one elementary student and one 12 month employee here on campus that have, that are known and, and shared with us that they had COVID. And in both of those cases, there was no need to quarantine anyone else in school. Of course, we don't do the quarantining, the Department of Health does. But according to the contact tracing and Department of Health. In both of those cases, it did not impact other individuals in our schools. When we listen to Dr. Osterholm's research. He indicates that it's community transmission that will be brought into the schools, not necessarily school transmission. Because in his opinion, that, you know, schools do a pretty good job of following the rules. We are rule followers and if we're told to mask up, we mask up. If we're told to social distance, we social distance as best as possible. Of course, the Department of Education said when feasible. When we went from cohort to five day a week, it just was not feasible in many of our classrooms, if not a majority. And we've been honest and open about that. That was a risk that the board and many of our public, our parents were willing to take. But we are still doing as much as we can to mitigate the spread and the transmission. We have a lot of Plexiglas. When I talk to my colleagues, I think, I can't prove this yet. But I think we have more Plexiglas than any other district that I've spoken to. Our cafeterias, there is a lot of Plexiglas because we do know when students take down their mask, they're more vulnerable while they're eating. We have opened up other areas in all of our cafeterias for students to eat at tables in the halls, for students to eat outside at picnic tables, for students to eat in bleachers in our gymnasiums. So we have large common spaces that we have also converted to places where students may choose to eat. The students are being very compliant with masking. The students are being very compliant when they can, social distance, they do. Sometimes they need reminders from us because they're kids. But we're very kind and polite about that and they're very compliant. So I'm very pleased with the way things have gone in only one week. But I would caution us, and I say one week, meaning five days a week in person. We know that we were in school in cohort for four weeks. And that was much easier to control and contact trace if anyone called us and said, you know, I'm not feeling well or I'm waiting on a test result. All of that information is run by our nurse administrator, our school nurse Liz Williams. And she tracks every single case that is reported to her. And then I get that spreadsheet without names. It's just case numbers. And, you know, we, we often do have people who aren't feeling well and go and get a test and they stay home. And that is the best thing that we can do. That's step number one in mitigating the spread. If you don't feel well, you don't come to school. If, and that goes for the adults and the students. So people have been very honest and open with Nurse Williams, and I appreciate that. And I want to encourage our parents and the public to continue to do that because that is step one. Step two is also, even if you are feeling well, that every adult in this district, we take our temperature and we report it on a form that goes to Human Resources. And we answer questions, that includes me every single morning. And that goes for students as well. They don't fill out a form and send it to Human Resources. But we do ask that the parents monitor their child's symptoms and take their child's temperature. And if the parent should forget, because we know, you know, we're not perfect. And sometimes you might forget in the morning, we have temperature scanners in every building. And they've been very discreet and so far, pretty effective. So all of these mitigations together is how we hope to keep the transmission rate very low in our school district and continue. But again, I will caution us, we've only completed one week of five day a week in person. We are prepared if we have to go remote or back to cohort, whatever the board would decide based on cases. But sometimes these things happen quite quickly and I may need to make a decision with the Department of Health. If we, if we would get a cluster quite quickly, I would notify the board and we would notify parents right away if there would be a change in the instructional model. Because we won't always have time to come back to a public setting and decide that. But I will keep the board, I will be in close contact even between now and our next meeting in November. And I would just ask for the public again, to be kind, understanding and flexible. I know it's very disruptive to parent schedules if we should have to close a building or a classroom. But we are prepared to do so. And if in consultation with the Department of Health, we need to do that, we will do that. And certainly, we won't take that lightly. We know it's a disruption to parent schedules. But at this point, we're very pleased with our first week of five days in person. And we're very pleased with the amount of work and the diligence that our teachers have put into this year, not just teaching, but thinking about health and public safety. So again, if you listen to Dr. Osterholm, he'll be live this Tuesday. You will hear what I've been hearing over and over. If we want to keep our schools open, we must keep community transmission low. And the not local transmission, because I don't have that qual of qualitative data, but across the United States so far in contact tracing, and this is not a judgment. This is simply from listening to the research and the doctors and the infectious disease experts. Transmission is occurring at funerals, weddings, family parties. Again, doesn't mean we, you know, have to stop living our life. We still need to find safe ways to coexist with this virus. But if we, we are seeing an uptick in community transmission. We need to do, all of us do our very best to control that and make smart decisions in small groups as much as possible. Certainly, the research also indicates that being outside, and I saw classrooms outside today. I love seeing that. But anytime we can be outside versus indoors helps as another layer to mitigate the spread. Again, that's from the epidemiologists, that's from the infectious disease experts. So as we start to think about Thanksgiving and Christmas, I know that will be a challenge with family parties, but if we see an escalation and we continue in a trajectory upwards in our community, zip codes and county. We, it could impact our schools. So I want to be honest and upfront with the public. Any questions by the board? That's all I have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Peterson.
Just to make a comment, Mr. Vice President, thank you, Dr. Vitale, for that extensive, but very thorough rendering of, of the data. I've had people ask me, why do I read two different articles in the same daily newspaper to quote two different numbers for cases of COVID? And the answer is a concept in the biostatistics of population health between incidence and prevalence. Incidence is like a snapshot. It's how many new cases do we have today? Prevalence refers to the number of cases existing in a population. So we know that if I feel sick, I go to the hospital, I get tested. They say you have COVID, we want to bring you in, we want to admit you or, or go home. Two days later, I'm feeling worse. I go back to the hospital, I get admitted. I'm in the ICU for five, six, seven days. I spend several days on a, on a post ICU floor. I go home and I have outpatient therapies because my lungs have been damaged. So that person who's had COVID for weeks is counted over and over again in prevalence statistics. Incidence is today, a snapshot. Prevalence is how many people are there in the study population that are suffering from the disease, whether it's COVID or whether it's a, a stroke or whatever the diagnosis may be. So just splitting out, when you read all these numbers. Read the fine print a little bit and try to figure out if the, if the authors are citing the incidence data. How many new cases are we getting every day versus the prevalence data of how many people are there in the population that are continuing to, to feel the effects of the disease and getting treatment for that?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Hester, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, I just want to thank Dr. Vitale. I knew this report wouldn't be a small report. I knew it would be very detailed. So I appreciate it very much. I, I want the community to understand that, that what she just explained to us is something we hear all the time from her, probably two or three times a week. And I want everybody to understand, we as board members want to be as transparent as possible. So everybody knows exactly what numbers we're looking at, why we make the decisions we do. So if you read something on Facebook or I get calls from all these different theories and things that people are thinking they're seeing out there. Dr. Vitale and the staff are on top of this. Trust them, trust where we go. And, and we always are willing to hear feedback, but understand Dr. Vitale is on top of this and we are hearing the reports daily. So once again, Dr. Vitale, thank you very much for that report. I look forward to seeing them every now and then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Is there any other questions or comments? Look at the screen first. And around the auditorium, and it does not look like there is any other questions or comments. I, I do have one question, Dr. Vitale. When folks ask us about the social distancing in the classrooms, and you mentioned it about the Plexiglas and how we probably have more Plexiglas than anyone. That is one of the mitigators that we use in the classroom to, to help out with social distancing, to have that physical barrier. And I think that that's something that although, you know, you can't always have the, the, the social distancing. The barrier helps improve that. So just, if you could talk about how it might be used in a classroom or how it is being used in a classroom? Just so folks get an idea of the, the prevalence that we do have of, of the use of Plexiglas.
Sure, I can speak to classrooms and Dr. McKinley can speak even more to secondary classrooms. Dr. McCarty could speak to elementary classrooms. In cafeterias, anywhere students are sitting less than six feet away from one another, there is Plexiglas. We saw a couple areas last week that we wanted to improve. So we've ordered even more Plexiglas and in some cases took Plexiglas where it wasn't being used as frequently and took that during lunch. So we think, you know, this, all of last week, we were troubleshooting, looking at buildings, looking at classrooms, looking in the cafeteria and working closely with our union leaders on what do you need? What do you see? What are you hearing? And where can we be better? Because none of this is perfect. We've never done this before, none of us. As a matter of fact, most summers are spent ordering supplies. Fine tuning our technology, tech department reimages, computers. It's still a very busy time, but the principals typically have all of April, May, June and July to build schedules, customizable schedules for our students, for 7,400 students. This year, they had to build and rebuild, they with the counselors, at least three master schedules. Normally you do one. And they had to hand schedule thousands of kids. So just to show you again, you know, the amount of work that occurred this summer. But when it comes to Plexiglas, that is, and if you listen to Dr. Osterholm. It's not one mitigation strategy that works. It's not like we looked at Plexiglas in the summer and said, oh, that's it. We just do that and everything will be fine. It's a combination of knowledge about the numbers, watching community transmission and figuring out if you can with the Department of Health. Where is this happening? What types of places? Not to judge what people are doing, but to make sure we're educated about it. It's difficult because this is private health information. So you want to be honest, you want to be upfront. You want to tell your public everything you know, but in the same token, you want to protect the privacy of children and families. Masking, of course, is another mitigation strategy that we've been very strict with at Seneca Valley early on. Even before the masking order, we were talking about this in our return to school task force. And I know early on, there was a lot of debate about whether it works or not. It's another layer. We know it's not perfect. It's another layer. Talking about cleaning at night, you know, we have misters with vital oxide, very expensive chemical, very safe chemical. Hospitals have used it for a long time to disinfect. We spray down every room every night. This room will be sprayed down when we leave tonight. That's another layer. Getting students outside, the foundation bought tents. If you can get outside, I saw physics class outside today, this afternoon in front of the senior high. Last week, I saw a chorus class outside and the chorus teacher was running between four groups of students because they were all divided up into different singing parts. I see constantly, you know, our band teachers moving instruments back and forth. We giggle about it anymore. They are some of the most flexible people I've ever met in regards to, well, now I'm going to go teach in this classroom where I can spread kids out. So I think all of these different layers of knowing how the virus spreads. And there's still debate about that. There's still ongoing research, but every day when a research study comes out, looking at that. Like early on, we were studying in July about HVAC systems. And we commissioned a study by our engineers on all of our HVAC systems in our buildings. There are schools that haven't even thought about that yet. So I'm very pleased. Our nurses, you know, it, several of our nurses went to a contact tracing class at John Hopkins over the summer, virtually. Even though they aren't doing the contact tracing, they understand it. And they can assist the Department of Health, especially, we're a big school. We have to coordinate, we have to communicate. So there's just so many different layers to this. All of these mitigation strategies together will hopefully keep our numbers low. But none of them will work if our county and our zip code numbers, if our community transmission spikes. It won't matter what we're doing in schools. It will come in and it will be tough to contain. So we, we need to, as a community, constantly ask ourselves, yes, we need to live our life. Yes, we need to go to the grocery store. Yes, we need to see family members. How can we do this as safely as possible? And how can we be smart about how we're meeting people in, in public situations? And being outside is one of, one of the best ways to mitigate the spread, not the only way, but one of the best ways. So I'm sorry, that's a long winded answer, but I live this every day and every night and every weekend. And I'm interested in it because I want to keep our schools open. So the more I can learn from epidemiologists, the more I can learn from infectious disease experts, public health officials. That's who I listen to, not mainstream media.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vitale. Any other questions or comments? One last look around the room. Okay. Thank you, we'll move on. At this point, we would get to the public comment portion of our meeting. However, we have no one signed up for a public comment. So we're going to move on to getting the, the business of the school taken care of. So at this time, I'm going to look for a motion for the following. The approval of our minutes from our work session of September 14th, 2020, or in our regular meeting of September 21st, 2020. Our treasurer's report. The general fund bills in the grand total amount of $4,674,039.85. Construction fund bills in the amount of $2,676,789.06. And those are all included in your backup. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Widowson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bradel. Is there any discussion on these issues? Hearing none, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Ms. Whittle. Ms. Bradel.
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Hester.
Yes.
Mr. Widowson.
Yes.
And Mr. Nickel. And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. It'll take us to administration action. Dr. Vitale, I know your name's on this, but I will take this. I'm going to seek a motion to approve the following. Charter School Funding Reform Resolution. To approve the resolution calling for charter school funding reform, as included in our backup, and school board meeting dates. To approve the school board meeting dates, January through June of 2021, as provided in our backup. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Hester. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Widowsen. Any discussion on these issues? Hearing none, Lisa, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Harrison? Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle? Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action. Ms. Harrison? Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, Lisa, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle? Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison? And Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. It'll take us to business finance action. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion for the fol, for the approval of the following business finance action, bond issue. Approve the appointment of PNC Capital Markets LLC as financial advisor, and Dinsmore &amp; Shoal LLP as bond counsel related to both outstanding and anticipated debt financings in connection with the school district's proposed and developing plans for capital improvements and facilities, as included in your backup.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion on this issue? Oh, Mr. Peterson?
A question, please. I, I think I noted that the agreement with PNC is open-ended. There's no termination date. I was just wondering why that was, or that is.
I'm going to say, Ms. Burdner, if you could address that?
I did not note specifically that it was open-ended, but we do one of these action items as required each time we are considering doing a public financing. So it is a recurring item that we do only when necessary.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, Lisa, if you'd call the roll on, on this issue.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison? Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle? Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We will move on to personnel action. Mr. Widowsen?
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. Tonight, under personnel, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignations, the appointments, the leaves, and the sabbaticals, these issues having been discussed previously in executive session, in executive session.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Since we discussed these in executive, we will move straight to the roll call. Lisa, if you will.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle? Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison? Mr. Jacobs? Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Widowsen?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine and the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We are in receipt of, I believe, nine pieces of communication. We've read them all, part of them are part of our daily allowances here at the, at the board as well, so they've been incorporated as needed. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, is there any item that would come up before the board? Looking at the screen, I see none. Looking around the room, I see none. I will take this time to give you a brief update on the Peasars school board seat that, that I'm running for. I did get notification that my petition was accepted. However, they do not know what the schedule is going to be for the ballots, because they do not have a complete list of all the school board members, and there is a, a potential conflict by using the PSBA list. So not sure what the timeline's going to be on that. However, PSBA has, for the first time, there are two candidates for this school board seat, myself and, and another individual, but this is the first time PSBA is going to endorse a candidate. So I'm going to be submitting a form by this Friday, looking for the PSBA endorsement. In the meantime, I am going to ask any of you and anyone that's listening if they have relatives, friends outside of our school district and other school districts to consider me, to reelect me to the school board seat for the Peasars Board. I think we're doing some, some good things. We're looking at the long-term growth and financial stability of the pension fund that is constitutionally guaranteed to the teachers of our Commonwealth. So it's very important to have that fund grow, and also, at the same time, you do it responsibly so we can minimize the, the Peasars rate. And as we've known, you know, everyone that's been on this board has known that because of the way the changes have been in that, the pension, it, our rate has increased exponentially throughout the last 10 or 15 years. So it's one of those things that I hold near and dear to my heart, and I'm trying to make sure we do the right thing, not just for our district, but all 500 school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So if there is no other item to be brought, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Some moves.
Thank you, Mr. Widowsen. Is there a second? Thank you. Ms. Harrison? Thank you very much. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for joining our meeting. Good night, everyone.